Good morning and welcome to the Blue Earth County, May 23rd Board of Commissioners Meeting, the first item. Those that can, please stand and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is to review the agenda, please Bob.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I'll move the agenda.
Okay, we've got a motion.
A second.
A second, any discussion, all ready to vote, all those in favor approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, carried. Blue Earth County has a policy that allows the public to address the board as long as we're contacted before noon on Thursday to make sure it can be on the agenda. Our policy, as indicated on the website and others, also indicates we do not take action, but will direct staff to respond to those comments. We've got that opportunity. Today, Mr. Greg Michelson has requested time on the agenda to address the county board. This is a public meeting with the set agenda, therefore we ask the public to limit comments to five minutes or less. I've asked our county administrator to keep time, provide a one-minute warning. Defamatory, abusive remarks or insulting comments and threats of violence will not be allowed and the speaker's privilege of address may be terminated. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Remember, the county board will take no action on comments during this period. Mr. Michelson, will you please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record?
Good morning, Greg Michelson, Lake Crystal.
Good morning Greg.
Good morning Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and county commissioners. Did you all receive a packet?
Yes, yep.
So it's a letter I received, or was dated April 25th during the start of planting season already, less than a month ago, saying that I need to make some changes on my ditches. The Board of Water and Soil Services has alternative practices, the second page, negative slopes. Third page shows planting corn to the top of the berm. I've had SCS, Soil Conservation Service, and bowser out looking at my fields in the past and they had approved them. Next is a picture showing the slope away from the ditch. Next one is showing the flags and another view of the land sloping away from the ditch, ditches on the left-hand side here. And I put a board out there with a level on it. It's hard to see from a distance, so I got a close-up shot on the following page there. And showing that the level was sloping away. This is a picture of my ditch. If you look at it over the top, you can see the field is a lot lower than what the top of the berm is. You also notice that there's not any erosion on this ditch. The next picture is a quarter mile north of my property. My property is on the left-hand side, you can just see the part of the ditch bank. On the right-hand side is a neighboring farmer that has a 60-foot buffer on that side and you can see it's sloughing away the whole length of the ditch there. My comment would be that, you know, if it's not broken, don't fix it. And the next page is a picture of, if it is broken, it should be fixed. This is part of the county's jurisdiction to repair that. They've been out there numerous times in the last few years. I was just contacted last week by Jingles of Gusterson Drainage that they were going to drop some material off on my road to fix this one. It's been a long time and it does need to be fixed. You can see there's a lot of erosion and going into the ditch there. The next one is irrelevant to this situation, but what else I have to go through is there's a river in the tree line here. I was required to put in a 50-foot buffer, which I did. It's all underwater, it's going to die. It's not serving any purpose, but I complied and put it in there. The next page is, buffer strips actually can increase water pollution. This is from a gentleman, Dr. David Loeb from Montana, professor of Department of Soil Sciences. "Vast majority of the sediments which leave the watershed and are presumed to end up in lakes like Lake Winnipeg are actually coming from the banks of streams and rivers, not from the agricultural land that drains into those streams," he said. Next one is Dr. Satish Gupta. "Increased precipitation is the main driver of increased flow. Agricultural land and land cover changes have had minimal impact on stream flow. Incorrect assumptions in previous studies minimize precipitation impacts." And his research was reviewed, peer-reviewed. The people that he was citing against saying that they did it wrong appealed it and they were found to be wrong with their errors and their research was pulled. And he also confirmed that 80% of the sediment was coming from stream bank erosion where pollution control had numerous years before saying it was coming from the flat farmland and if we just use conservation tillage, the problem would be solved. Well, still isn't solved because they were barking up the wrong tree.
One minute remaining.
Here's a picture of your property down across from the Judson Bottom Road there, below Sibley Park. You can't see it in the next pictures because it's underwater, but it's, the erosion is still there. You can see they got a lot of buffer coming down in there and it's, and it's not helping. Water storage is the next thing that's really becoming a big issue and as you can see in pictures here, a lot of our farmland is underwater, covered numerous times throughout the year. We are storing water out on the land and released in, over a long period of time. So water storage is something that, it's good if you can catch, but you have to release it so that it can make room for the next stuff. Thank you for allowing me time today. Do you have any questions? I can answer them.
Do you have any questions though?
I don't at this time, no.
Pretty comprehensive.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you Greg.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is, is not necessarily public comment, but we've been contacted by Congressman Brad Finstead to have some time, so we'd like to welcome Mr. David Wing, the District Outreach Representative from Congressman Finstead to the podium. For the record, if you would please cite your name and an address.
David Wing and 1400 Warren Street, Mankato, Minnesota.
Good morning.
Thank you folks for having me this morning. It's great to see quite a few familiar faces. I'm only here to introduce myself as your District Outreach Representative for Congressman Brad Finstead. I work for the western part of District 1, so from Blue Earth County all the way to the South Dakota border, I do outreach for that entire region. We also have an office actually pretty locally, about 41 minutes away over in New Ulm. We operate office hours nine to five every Wednesday and Thursday, and I've got that address on my business card here, which I can give you at a later, later date. I met yesterday with Bob and Josh to go over some of the county issues and have already brought those priorities to our office in DC just to help you get a head start on some of those issues, primarily with struggling with retaining jailers and that type of situation. So, as the congressman always says, I've got two ears and one mouth, so I'm here to listen and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Good.
Any questions?
That was pretty good too.
For the congressman, through his staff. How many counties do you have?
I want to say it's seven counties.
Okay, so how many of you are there in this congressional district?
So we have three outreach representatives. I handle the western part of the district. Our representative Lauren Dower handles the central part of the district and Keith Allen is our eastern part, so he handles Good Hugh County and South.
There's some turf.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
All right.
All right.
Well, thanks for stopping.
Well, thank you for making the introduction and we see you around at lots of different events.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Thanks Dave.
Thank you.
Tab number one deals with childcare forgivable loan application. I'll ask those that are involved in that to either come to the podium or come to the chairs, whatever works the best. Chair is fine if you want.
You'll come right up here Jennifer.
Sure, okay.
Come on.
Sounds good. All right, so good morning, Chair and Commissioner and Administrator Meyer, thank you for having me this morning. I was hoping that Ms. Tummers would be here, but she does run a childcare center, so I know that's unpredictable and so I think I can probably take over and try to answer questions as best as possible. So if it's all right, I'll just go right into the request. Again, first of all, thank you for your time this morning. My name is Jennifer Brolin, City Administrator for the City of Eagle Lake. Just to give you a little background, Ms. Tummers purchased Little Sprouts back in September of 2022 and she is seeking a forgivable loan in the amount of $18,723.11. And her project scope includes completing a needed security improvement at the center, undertaking a retrofit to create additional toddler classroom and create more slots, purchase furnishings for that additional classroom, and then other equipment necessary to improve operational efficiencies and ensure continued operations at the center. Right now, the center is licensed for 54 children and she would like to convert an existing staff break room into a small classroom, which would result in six to seven more slots. So overall, the estimated project cost is slightly higher than what we have available for funds, so her overall project cost is just under $27,000. Out of that $35,000 that was originally allocated to Eagle Lake for the program, there's $18,723.11 remaining and that comprises the request that was approved by the Eagle Lake EDA and the city council. We did meet with Brian Stating, formerly with RCEF. He's now with CETA, but he did provide a consultation, reviewed the business plan and financials, and indicated no concerns. And as I mentioned, the Eagle Lake EDA and city council both reviewed the requests from Ms. Tummers with Little Sprouts and recommends that the requested loan amount be approved. The loan would be secured with machinery and furniture and fixtures in the daycare center.
Okay, I would ask board members, any questions you have? For Jennifer?
I don't want to have any questions at this time, Mr. Chair. The report was very thorough, appreciate that. If there's no other questions, I would move approval of the request.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, I just, just thank you Jennifer for bringing it forward. This is a busy little place, I see. I still, I can't figure out how they can get that many little kids in that place, but they, they do a great-
They're Little Sprouts.
Yes, they're little, but they do a great job up there and they have been no concerns with that organization since they've been out.
Perfect, I'll pass it along, they'll appreciate that.
They've been doing a good job, so.
Great.
Other thoughts, comments?
Always good to have daycare.
That's right.
The board department of every community, so. If there's other questions or comments, are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's carried.
Thank you so much.
Thanks Jennifer.
Good seeing you.
Tab number two is planning and zoning, so I ask them to come forward, please.
Morning gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, if you would, just for the record, introduce yourselves for that and we'll, they're here for an action item. We'll be having a public hearing, a public comment will be allowed in just a moment, but staff, please, if you'd introduce yourselves for the record.
I am George Leary with Blue Earth County Planning and Zoning.
Edolfing with Blue Earth County Planning and Zoning.
Okay, and then I'd ask for your report.
The first item is PC 06-23 is a request from Blue Earth County for review and approval for an amendment to Chapter 24, zoning, Article 6, Urban Fringe Overlay District. The amendment updates the purposes, uses, and general standards sections of the article and adds the inner, urban fringe district map section as Section 24-505. And this item was reviewed by and approved by the county board on February 21st, 2023. However, the statutory required public notice was not submitted for publication. State Statute 375.51 subdivision 2, Notice of Intention states, in part, "No county ordinance shall be enacted unless a notice of intention to enact it has been published in the official newspaper of the county not less than 10 days before the meeting or public hearing required by subdivision 1 and which it is to be considered." The notice has now been published and the ordinance amendment is again being presented to the county board to comply with the notification requirements. On February 1st, 2023, one citizen addressed the planning commission and asked if the wording in Section 24-504(c) could be amended to add or assist in bringing the existing use into compliance. This is not in your amendment, but the resulting language would have stated, "A map amendment to underlining zoning district in the UFD may only be considered on land if compliant in Section 24-46 or to assist in bringing into compliance or bringing existing use into compliance and meeting the following criteria." That individual also asked to strike Section 24-504(c)(4), which stated, "The purpose of the map amendment must be for a less intense land use and zoning district." And it was, is, belief was that it was also under other protections already included in the ordinance. The members of the commission indicated the information provided by the public should be reviewed by the county attorney's office before including it in the amendment. They stated they were comfortable with the amendment as presented by staff and if the suggested changes presented by the public are simple, they should be considered by the county board. Following the discussion, the county planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the amendment to the county board based on the findings provided by the staff. And the board action is the adoption of the ordinance amendment based on the findings recommended by the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we've heard the, the report from staff. At this time, we'll open for public comment on PC 06-23. This hearing is being recorded, so please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to five minutes. I'll ask the county administrator to keep time. Defamatory, abusive remarks or insulting comments and threats of violence will not be allowed and the speaker's privilege of address may be terminated. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. At this time, I'd ask, is anyone who'd like to comment on PC 06-23? I'll ask a second time, is there anyone in the room that would like to comment on PC 06-23? For the third and last time, I'll ask anyone wishing to comment on PC 06-23. Seeing no one come to the podium, I will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the board and ask, are there any comments from the board? And if not, I would ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move for the adoption of the ordinance amended based on the findings recommended by the planning commission.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second, discussion. Other comments? Are we ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Ask staff to introduce the next item before the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. PC 10-23 was a request from Victor Barky and Jason Winarka for review and approval of the preliminary and final plat of the Barky Acres subdivision. The plat will include two lots. The properties being platted are zoned rural residence are in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 17, South Bend Township. The location address is 54193 State Highway 68, Mankato, Minnesota. Staff presented the, presented the report. There was no comment from the applicant and there was no public comment. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. And the board action is the passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we've heard the staff report. At this time, we'll open for public comment on, on PC 10-23. This hearing is being recorded, so please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to five minutes. I'll ask county administrator to keep that time with a one-minute warning. Defamatory, abusive remarks or insulting comments and threats of violence will not be allowed and the speaker's privilege of address may be terminated. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. So at this point, is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 10-23? Please come to the podium. I'll ask a second time, if there's anyone interested in public comment on PC 10-23? And for the third and final time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 10-23? If not, I will close the public comment portion, bring it back to the board. Are there comments or questions from the board? And if not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the passage of the resolution based on the recommendations of the planning commission.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second, discussion. Any discussion?
Nope.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Are there anything else from planning and zoning?
No, sir.
All right, this concludes our planning and zoning items.
They'll probably not want me to come to the next one too. The meeting was only 10 minutes long and I missed it. Yeah, I bet it'll be payback, won't it? Thanks, George.
Our next, next topic for Blue Earth County Board meeting is, is agenda item number seven, drainage. And we're going to start with County Ditch 42 Repair Report, tab three. So Ryan, if you would introduce yourself and give your report.
Good morning, Ryan Henneker, Blue Earth County Drainage. First item up is a repair report for County Ditch 42, which is located in Section 13 of Butternut Valley Township. The scope of the work is, we have a area of peat soil that has subsided. There's sags and very shallow tile, concrete tile, original line. We're looking to reroute it, which we can statutorily do for protection of it. Bids were solicited by multiple contractors. The low bid number was presented by Gusterson Drainage in the amount of $68,753 for this repair, which we are seeking approval from the drainage authority.
Okay, are there any questions?
Nope. I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the repair report. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second, discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. We go to tab number four, County Ditch 12, please, Ryan.
Yep, we have a bid award. I have a quick memo. Quotes were solicited from multiple contractors for the proposed cleaning and repair work on County Ditch 12. These repairs include the construction of a weir to protect, excuse me, a weir to protect the upstream wetland. On May 2nd, 2023, two quote submissions were received for the repair work. Groundworks Backhold Service submitted a lump sum bid of $113,000, excuse me, $113,551.40 and Borneke Construction Incorporated submitted a lump sum bid of $75,208. The engineer's estimate was initially $55,989.36. There's a breakdown of the table there. ISG has worked with Borneke Construction on past projects with a similar scope of work with positive results. ISG recommends awarding the project to Borneke Construction Incorporated. We are requesting the drainage authority to award the bid to Borneke Construction in the amount of $75,208 for the proposed repairs for County Ditch 12.
Okay, we've heard the report. Any questions on that? If not, entertain a motion?
I'll also move.
Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, discussion on the motion?
That's a little alarming from the bid and from the engineer's estimate. Chuck, say why, I mean, I can see why they're off, but mostly in the vegetation removal.
No, so part of that volatility of such a small project like that is the mobilization.
Yeah.
You're talking like a thousand feet on each side of the ditch and some of that is also that vegetative cleaning that's going to have to happen at, happen at a later date. But yeah, it's hard to get big guys to mobilize. Any cheaper, you know, it's, the smaller ones are a little more volatile.
Yeah, the weir was a little bit more and-
And see, actually, we got a grant for a lot of that.
Oh, did we? Okay, because that was, yeah, that was $15,000 more than what the engineer, $10,000 more than the engineer's estimate, so that's a good portion of it.
Yep, so we got $50,000 to cover.
Yeah, and smaller projects are, especially when there's plenty of big ones out there.
Yeah.
They need to be done as well.
Right.
Any thoughts?
We got to get it done.
Okay, we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Next, we go to tab five, JD Ditch 29, please, Ryan.
All right, combination of a memo here for JD 29 and County Ditch 36. The Blue Earth County Ditch 36 watershed is approximately 2,430 acres in size and is located in Butternut Valley Township. The judicial ditch 29 watershed is approximately 2,520 acres and located in Judson Township. A petition to outlet acreage into CD 36 was received on March 30th, 2023, and was accompanied with a petition for removal of benefits, which included some of the same acres from CD 36 petition, with additional acres for portions of JD 29 public drainage system. Drainage's authority attorney Calvin Brugan of Rankin-Neunen reviewed both petitions and found- found them to be adequate. Attorney Van Brugan recommended the appointment of an engineer and a viewer to review the maps provided as part of the petitions. Said appointed engineer shall supply the Drainage Authority with a report giving his opinion regarding the adequacy of outlet for CD 36. Mr. Van Brugan also recommend the appointment of a viewer to make recommendations regarding the outlet fees and benefits and supply a report to the CD 36 Drainage Authority. Viewers also assisted by an appointed engineer shall also be appointed to aid in the viewer's report for petition JD 29, which is a removal of property from the public drainage system. At today's meeting of the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we are requesting an order to appoint Engineer Charles Chuck G. Brando, or of ISG, to review the documents provided in the petitions, and also prepare an opinion letter in accordance with Minnesota Statute 103E. We are also requesting the order include the appointment of Viewer Mark Behrens to make recommendations for an outlet fee and benefits for CD 36, as well as provide a viewer's report for JD 29 petition for removal under Minnesota Statute 103E.
Okay, we've heard the request. Any questions on that? Are we ready for a motion? The motion would be to appoint the engineer...
Yep.
Prepare opinion letter, also requesting, uh, uh, appointment of Viewer Mark Behrens to view as, um, and provide a viewer's report for JD 29.
I'll move approval.
Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Next is tab number six, CD 36, Ryan, please.
I, I had included both.
What do we have to do with that as a separate, do we need a separate motion for that?
I would defer to Bob on that one.
I would say, at one hurt, uh, I, I would probably recommend it, even though you've done it.
So same engineer and same viewer?
Correct.
Move approval for 36.
Any second motion?
Second.
In a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. It's still easier to make sure we've got a...
Yeah.
A clean motion on, on, one being a judicial ditch and the other one being a county ditch.
Yeah, a little different actions.
All right, anything else on drainage from you? All right? Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Next, I'll ask Lisa to come forward, as we'll talk about the 2022 year-end audit adjustments. Please introduce yourself for the record, Lisa.
Good morning.
Good morning, Lisa Malinsky, mine as director.
Good morning.
Uh, this is my, one of my favorite times of the year. The audit is almost done. We just have a few cleanup items that we always go through, um, before we get the auditor's opinion. Uh, so the first approval we need is for operating transfers for 2022, um, transfers in and out between different, um, pro, or different funds.
Okay, so let's do these one at a time. Uh, what would, is the pleasure to do with the, the 2022 transfers. Are we ready to approve them?
I'll move that.
We have a motion?
I'll second that.
And a second discussion? We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Okay, second item, Lisa, please.
Thank you. The next item is approval for the, um, revenue and expenditure budget adjustments done in 2022. You can see the general fund, we increased the revenue by, um, over $6 million, which was due to budgeting some ARPA funds that we received our second half there. Um, human services had some charges for services, um, that we increased the revenue budget there. And then for expenditures for the general fund, again, it was for the, um, ARPA expenses. And for Public Works, they had, um, budgeted the revenue for CASAD 1 in 2021, but then they had the expenditures in 2022. So you can see 14 and a half million increase in expenditures there, which was just a timing issue.
Okay, so we've heard the recommendation to approve the revenue and expenditure budget adjustment for 2022. I have a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Number three, Lisa, please.
The final item is to approve the following other financing sources and uses, um, adjustments that were done in 2022. Um, these include, um, for example, uh, they could be, uh, bonding, uh, under the ditch or, um, different transfers between the different departments also.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation to approve the other financing sources or uses for budget adjustments for the year 2022. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved. Second.
Here we have a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Anything else, Lisa, for us?
Thank you. Um, we'll have our audit report done in the next week and so, or so, and then we will be posting it on the website, uh, next month.
Good, thank you.
Oh, and we did get the award, um, 35 years now.
Wow.
So, um, that was a long time.
That's awesome.
Very good, congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number nine on our agenda is Human Services, Tab 8. Phil, I'd ask you to come forward and, uh, introduce yourself for the record and your report.
Good morning.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Phil Claussen, Human Services Department. I also have Julie Stevimer, who's our supervisor for community-based services, um, Yellow Line and Children's Mental Health. This, uh, month is our normal Children's Mental Health Data Month, but, um, there's also a project that Julie's been really instrumental in leading for a regional, um, Children's Mental Health Continuum of Care, trying to standardize what we do across counties, because we often will say, well, if you come to Blue Earth County, it's different than what you get in Nicollet County. We're trying to address that, so she'll present some information on that as well. Uh, Mr. Chair, I have four action items in the packet to bring before the board today. The first, under Supportive Housing, um, Department of Human Services, Community Living Infrastructure. Um, this supports people with disabilities for hous, who have housing instability and want to live in the community. It's a partnership with ourselves, Los Suerte, Rice and Nicollet Counties. It pays for a housing resource specialist at half of a FTE, I'm sorry, at a full FTE, and also the supervisor at half of an FTE. Um, the current grant that we've had is 294,880. Um, this extension for an additional two years is for an additional 220,240, for a total of 515,120 for four years. So the term, July 1st of '21 through June 30th of '25. Uh, the next one, Financial Assistance, SNAP, Employment and Training. For many years, we've worked with MRCI, who provides our employment services, um, to participants in our various, um, programs, including SNAP in this case. Uh, the contract, original contract was signed in October of '22. We did receive additional funding from DHS, the amount of $22,023, and an extra $500 in support service allocation. Um, again, the start was October of '22, and now it'll run through September 30th of '23 of this year. Uh, third item, Blue Earth County Mental Health Center. This is our standing agreement with the South Central Community-Based Initiative, our Adult Initiative Joint Powers Board, for psychiatric medication management, and it does serve ourselves and the surrounding 10 county area. Um, it does, we do have language added to make it clear that that is our catchment area. It's for counties in our collaborative. And the amount, 545,533.37, term, October of '22, and now will continue through September of '23. And finally, Public Health. Minnesota Department of Health Infrastructure Grant, um, Public Health Emergency Preparedness, which we refer to in an acronym of FEP often. Um, this purpose of this grant is for us to recruit, retain, and train skilled and diverse, um, public health workforce. So this is a new focus area. It also does include, um, infrastructure related to emergency preparedness specifically. Um, you'll see at the very bottom of the narrative, um, training and supports include physical and mental health wellness, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, it is one-time grant for 229,034. The term is May 23 of '23 through November 30th of '27, so it's one-time funding over a four-year span. And those are my action items, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we've heard the recommendation for board's approval. We're okay to do all these together, Bob, as one motion?
Yes, that's correct.
So let's, uh, get a motion on the floor, then we can discuss them if necessary.
I'll move the four.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Okay, discussion. Any questions on any of the four items?
Lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, yes. Always a lot going on.
Yeah, Phil's always busy.
Here's your true commissioner.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair.
All right, are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's carried. Next, Phil, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I will turn it over to Julie. Again, recognize her work in both areas, our kind of data that she'll, um, apply to an area, it's one of our areas that we're very busy, um, overflowing in, in Children's Mental Health, and so she'll start with that. And then the second part will be about that, um, collaborative project we have with our region. So Julie Stevimer.
Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning, Julie.
Good morning. What's that?
Did you say, yeah, might, might wanna...
Oh, the mic's out.
Might come a little bit.
Thank you, I'll pull it forward. So there's a lot of data in front of you, and I am not going to go through all of this, but it's information and just to, um, share with you and, and emphasize where we're at with Children's Mental Health and what has happened probably in the last five years. I've been with the county for five years. Um, I do have a history in Children's Mental Health. I worked 16, 17 years in children's residential facilities, and I have probably about 11 years in county human services. So, um, this is near and dear to my heart, and I wanted to present what we're seeing and then what we, as a 10-county region in Region 9, decided to do about a year ago. So just some overviews on what's, what the current situation is and what we're dealing with. So Children's Mental Health is a mandated service, and we are required to serve all children who have been diagnosed with a severe emotional disturbance, regardless of, of their, um, financial stability and, uh, ability to pay. With that, we provide case management services, meaning that we connect them to services in the community to get the mental health and behavioral health services and other services that they need. Um, we just don't look at somebody and say, oh, this person meets that criteria. So they have to, kids have to come to us with a diagnostic assessment that indicates that they meet the criteria as severely emotionally disturbed. So, and besides that, they have to be in need of intensive outpatient services or higher levels of care. So it's a, it's a process. Um, what I want to share with you, too, is what the case manager does is they will assess the needs, they will take a look at those diagnoses, they will take a look at the needs of the family, they take a look at the needs of the child, and put together a treatment plan based upon a functional assessment. So the data that I have before you shows about a year ago, you know, when I did the, the, uh, report to the board, we had 156 cases that were opened or assigned. As of the beginning of this month, we were at 170, um, with 7.5 FTEs providing case management services. So I actually have eight staff, but one staff does .25 intake and one does .25, um, chemical dependency. What's been interesting is, um, as you may be aware of this, if you take a look at the news media and what's being presented as far as the needs of kids and the severity of what's going on in the world of Children's Mental Health, we're finding that truthful and very true in, in Blue Earth County as well. So what I've been tracking is since September, we have probably about an average of 20-plus referrals pending at any given time. We actually went down to 19 on Monday, but I understand there's another one coming in. So it's been, and, and, and normally it would be at between 6 and 12 that we were dealing with, so it's been consistently high. Um, I looked at my data last night, I think we have 33, um, children and youth that meet the criteria, um, with completed referrals since the beginning of March. Um, so that, that in itself tells me that, um, this is not slowing down. It may over summer with referrals, less referrals coming from schools, but then it will pick up again in September. So if you go to the slide for Children's Mental Health Program data, it look, you'll see that, um, in 2022, again, we have 159 cases that were, um, opened at the end of that year. We're projecting right now that we're gonna be much higher. Um, we've actually added staff along the way. Uh, we added a person in, in FTE in 2019, and we added actually two in 2021. But we're still seeing this increase coming through. And again, a, a child or an adolescent has to meet the criteria of being what we call a Level 3 in order for us to open up for services. So we're looking at criteria and looking at what their needs are. Um, what we're seeing, though, is more, more of our kids are at this 4, 5, and 6 level of care, which means they would probably meet the criteria for out-of-home placement in a group home or a psychiatric residential treatment facility. So, um, when we get, it used to be we would open cases, um, and connect to services. In some instances, right now, we are opening cases and due to the risk of the child's behavior, we are screening and looking for out-of-home placement. So just some trends that we have, um, that's happening. We're seeing an increase in the number of sibling groups that meet the criteria for the SED criteria. So currently, we're serving 20 families that have at least between two and six kids that are open for case management services. We're seeing an increase in co-occurring disorders, which is mentally ill and substance use disorder as young as 11. And it's really concerning to me when I see, uh, a diagnostic assessment coming through and the youth has tried fentanyl. We're also seeing, as I've mentioned, uh, previously, an increase in the number of referrals that include level of care determinations that are beyond what we used to see five years ago at that Level 3. So we're getting these 4, 5s and 6s coming in. Some other trends is, you know, as I mentioned previously, back when I first started five years ago, when I would ask intake, what do we have for referrals pending? It used to be 6 to 12. And that kind of was that way until, um, a couple of years ago, we started getting into a higher range, and then last fall, we, we've been consistently at 20, and it's up to 26 that we're dealing with, um, parents and mental health providers and saying, here's what we need to make that determination as to whether or not we open them for services. The other trend that's been kind of scary for all of the supervisors in Region 9 is the fact that we're seeing a lot more group home and residential facilities closed. In fact, I started tracking off memory and having other supervisors, um, come, help me compile a list, um, is the number of facilities that have closed in the state of Minnesota. Um, I added three to my list in the last month. One was a Minnesota facility, one was a border facility, no, two are border facilities that have closed, and those would have been providers that we've used in the past between Human Services and Corrections. I think the other thing that's interesting, too, is just the kids that we're seeing with very complex and intense mental health and/or chemical health needs. High risk of injury to self and parents. We do a lot of work with our Crisis Center, um, and, and with Mobile Crisis, their Mobile Crisis Team, um, and co-responsive law enforcement, um, as a part of a safety plan. So we are really trying to utilize community resources to keep these kids safe. Um, what's happening in the world of trying to find safe places for these individuals is that a case manager can spend anywhere between... that a case manager can spend anywhere between 26 to 61 hours in a month on just one client. So that's one client out of an average caseload of 23. We had some really good teamwork on Friday, and I have to share this. It was between Child Protection and Children's Mental Health where it was a child that was open to both, for both units. And the place that this youth was at was saying, this person needs to be gone today. She's too high risk for us. We can't meet her needs. You need to find another placement for her. So the Child Protection case manager and one of my case managers worked very diligently all day. Four o'clock in the afternoon, we are doing a juvenile screening team with, with, that includes Corrections and our clinical supervisor, Child and Family Services, Children's Mental Health. They found a placement at four o'clock on Friday, willing to take this youth. So, and we were, we were very excited because otherwise, we might have been there a lot later trying to figure out where we're gonna go. So it, it just shows the teamwork between a couple of units and just how hard it is to find a placement. So with that being said, this is something, based upon the information that I presented, we started looking about a year ago, because we started seeing some of these trends, but we've never put them on paper, and that's why I'm presenting that today. In Region Nine, we were taking a look at this, what we needed to do for Families First, which is, it's a federal regulation on trying to maintain kids and youth in, in the communities without putting them in out-of-home care. There's a lot of extra steps that we need to do now in order to place a child in out-of-home care. But as, as a region, we were meeting, and we continued to meet. And one of the things I said to Phil was, we've got to do something regionally with crisis stabilization. We've got to be able to figure out what we can collectively do in our, in our ten-county area, because we have reached out to the Department of Human Services. They don't have answers for us. So what do we take, what do we do? And what can we actually do ourselves? And so from that, we have a gap analysis that we took a look at. All of the continuum of care services, and it's a, it's a handout that, that I'm not gonna go through, but it's from, you know, children seeking out mental health providers all the way up to inpatient psychiatric care. And so we looked at each of those services, including children's mental health, targeted case management, and saying, what, what are, what are these services? What's best practices? What are the gaps? What are some positive capacities, things that are doing, you know, going well for them? And what are some strategies that we realistically can take a look at and put into action? So 26 pages later, we have it. It's very, it's very complex. A lot of people look at it, they're very overwhelmed by it, but we, that's where we started, and it's supported where we wanted to go. So we, the authors of the gap analysis is all of our regional supervisors. We actually had a project consultant, Surenida, who's a retired Human Services Director out of Listor County, help us as a project consultant. The regional directors were able to provide a contract with her, and she supported us through the end of December, which we, we felt like we made great headway because besides doing this project, we all had our, our regular duties to, to try to get at. So what we were really looking at is trying to improve access through the continuum of care, which are the services that are provided to kids. And we really wanted to figure out if there's anything else that we could do to help keep kids in the community. Looked at some common themes, really looking at what are the, with the complexity of cases. We've looked at limited crisis management, crisis stabilization. Looked at the intensity and frequency and level of aggression and self-harm of the displayed by some of these kids that we're working with. And we also recognize limited to know children's residential placement and psychiatric residential treatment facility options in the state of Minnesota. It's interesting because I think for the first time in, in my short career here, five years, we have one child placed in Massachusetts. It was the only place that we could find that would meet his level of needs. And so, and besides that, you know, we're required, it's a mandate, that we're required to do monthly face-to-face visits with kids in out-of-home care. So we, we sent out our case manager on the last day of the month and the first day of the month, so we meet that criteria. So, yes. And we're not the only, only county. So in this continuum of care and with the Region Nine Supervisors meeting, we're actually pooling resources as well as saying, who have you checked in? What is your, your, where's, where are you at with your high-needs kids? What have you looked at for placement options? So we're sharing a lot of these resources back and forth. So really, what we looked at is trying to take a look at the continuum of care. What are some things that we can do? We actually put together some bullet points, roads to enhancing children's mental health continuum of care, some of our priority areas for that. And based upon that, we actually came up with three priority areas for 2023. The first one is to create an organizational structure and supporting platform, which is kind of formalizing the meetings that the regional supervisors were doing into a children's cabinet. And basically, under the direction of the South Central Community Based Initiative, which is our adult mental health kind of initiative for the ten-county region. So we operate under their Joint Powers Board. We are in place, so we've got, we've accomplished that one for the year. The next one is psychiatric consultation by a child psychiatrist out of the University of Minnesota. We have a contract in place using grant funds with a psychiatrist, and we are doing monthly, two meetings a month, two consultation periods a month. And basically, it's for us to get a different look and some other ideas on some of these really complex kids, to present a case, to have it reviewed, to get some recommendations. And it's not to take the place of a child's treating physician or psychiatrist, but for us as case managers and supervisors to understand, are we doing everything that we possibly can with this youth? And I've participated in the two meetings for the month of May, and it's gonna be very beneficial. So we've got that one checked off. The next one that we're looking at is really taking a look at children's crisis stabilization. And it's really tough to find beds short-term in the state of Minnesota. We do have a contract with Woodland Centers for Detox. They also have a crisis stabilization program for youth that we're able to access even though we're not a member county. And so our goal is try to find something in this region, try to find a provider that's willing to do that for all ten counties. And I have actually a meeting on Thursday with a provider to take a look at what if? How can they help? How can we help within the ten counties? So we're making progress. It's, it's not that we're just sitting and, and saying, we have, we, you know, we don't know what to do. We're really trying to say, realistically, what can we do to support each other and, and to look at alternatives? One of the things that we did with the Department of Human Services that was really kind of interesting is we mapped out just what it would look like to open a case with children's mental health. I'm not gonna go through this. But it, it was a four-hour process. And really, you know, what you look at here, it talks about what the process is, the organizational factors, organizational factors with DHS, external entities, and then, you know, who regulates that? There's a lot of Minnesota state statutes and rules. And when we got done with this first exercise of just opening case manager, or opening a child, children's mental health case, I said, that's all up in our heads. This is what I have to do as a supervisor. I've gotta remember these statutes. I've gotta reference them if I don't quite know what we're supposed to do. And so it was, it was kind of like overwhelming, but anyway, it just, it's, it's kind of a diagram in the day of a life of opening a case. And the next one really shows the complexity of finding and securing out-of-home placements. So again, it's that process. It's what we can do regionally, locally, how does DHS factor in, the external entities, and just some of the governing factors, statutes and rules. So, and this, this, when you take a look at this, you can understand why if a case manager is looking for a placement, why it could take up to 60 hours a month of that person's time just trying to secure a safe place for a child. So we have more work to do. As you can see, we had three priorities within our, our Region Nine, ten-county group. And, but realistically, we looked at what can we achieve this year, and we'll set and prioritize goals for next year. Questions?
Thank you for the report. Questions from the board?
So, I have a question. So we've got them in placement, and now they're coming out. What do we do then?
We look at what their needs are coming out of placement. Is it, can they go back home? Do we have to do a step down? For some placements, it is, well, all placements really, the family needs to be involved. And we really work hard. Phil and I worked hard on just going through some informational, information to give to families to say, we don't start with placement in Blue Earth County. What, we want to make sure that you've exhausted all your resources. We have to take a look at risk, but you need to be connected to services. The child has to change their pattern, their behavior. They've got to be stabilized with their mental health, but the family also has to make changes. And so that's huge.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, the pieces of stability are case management, number one, that's our bread and butter, so that this, this statute that says we have to go visit these kids, it's to keep up that relationship with their case manager. So when they come out of placement, they have a friendly face, somebody that they know that's been through it with them. The other thing I was gonna highlight just from the clinical side is that all the studies forevermore have been, and especially with the younger person, you know, kind of talk therapy and negotiation has its limits. And so that psychiatric contract, we have a view of them to say, are there dysregulations about their medication and about their chemistry? And if so, we need a doc helping us with that too. So sticking with therapist, with doc, case manager, that's the transition plan. And the other thing that I always think is really hopeful back in the day when I worked, Julie and I have a lot in common with working with a lot of adolescent in facilities, but that they're changing all the time. That's a good thing. So that their chemistry is changing as they grow, and they, they are very resilient. And so there's always a hopeful feeling there. As, as, to be honest, adults who are very entrenched in their chemical use, it's hard to change that. Kids, not, not as hard sometimes to, to try to get them, you know, on a new track.
So I think for us, and for us, it's, it's hard when the caseloads are as high as they are. You know, if you look at the data I presented, we're, the recommendations from, based on Minnesota statute is 15. We're, we're sitting at about 23. So when you have those difficult-to-place kids, they're the most time-consuming. And then the reconnection back to family is very time-intensive too. So it's, it's, it's great that we have services in place, and we can connect, and we're doing the outreach as best we can. What, what tends to happen, I think we, we lose some traction with, with our kids that have maybe some less needs, but they still are at that level three level of care. And so we, we prioritize, prioritize cases like we did on Friday. Somebody loses out though.
I have another question. So what would have happened if you couldn't have placed that kid on Friday?
Here's what some other counties have done. They have literally housed them in their human service department and staffed them overnight with staff or in a hotel. Yeah. We haven't, we haven't got that far yet.
No, and Mr. Chair, Commissioner, same, same deal as a couple of times, I know it was on the Child Protection side of the house, and Ann Rosskopf, our supervisor, was gone, and, and Julie and others were helping, but I, it was, there's statute that says it has to happen on a Friday night. I don't know why, but it always faces on a Friday night. But that's what it was. And it happened a couple of times in a row, and we were just out of cards. We had nothing else to do. So we were thinking hotel, we were thinking, how do you double staff? Yeah, it's, it's desperation. It really, really is. And it's very scary. I mean, just because that one, I didn't have the buffer, the supervisors that kind of do this all the time. I was on the phone trying to go, what do we do with nothing? No, no options, zero. And so, yeah, that's what some people have done. And there was an article in paper about how they converted something in the city's old garage to a kind of a holding tank. And, you know, they took some flak for that, but it's desperate times. I, it's that bad. I, I think it's a good story just because we don't have any. Please return to your, to your question.
Lot of challenges out there. Hopefully, we can find some opportunities and take some of that. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Julie, for that report. Very good. And thank you, Phil.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Yeah, you too.
Thanks, sunshine. Uh, next item on the agenda, tab nine, is the opioid settlement. Josh, I'd ask you to come forward and introduce yourself for the record.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'm your deputy county commissioner, I was gonna say. I guess that's a new title I've given yesterday.
Demoted?
I didn't say that. Uh, so we have today is an authorization to approve expenditures from opioid settlement funds. And part of the memorandum of agreement with this is if it's not in the budget going forward, we have to come for a special authorization for the board to do this expenditure. We've been meeting as an internal team for a little over a year, talking about how we're going to utilize some of these opioid funds. That group included our county attorney with Pat, Sheriff Jeff Wurzel, Paul Barton, Captain, Chad Rush Drug Task Force, Human Services with Phil and Angie, and Corrections with John and Robin. And where we are at is we are now prepared to make our first funding recommendation. And this recommendation is to support what the United Way has been doing in conjunction with our elementary schools here in our community with Youth Mental Health Navigator Services. The United Way started this pilot last spring, working with District 77, and also some funding with Mankato Clinic and the Mayo Clinic on funding this position for a one-year pilot. We've been watching this, we've seen presentations, what they've been doing with it, and really like what we've seen with some of the outcomes that they're doing. This focus has really been on elementary schools, so they're focusing on K through fifth grade currently. I know there's at times it might seem a little strange that that's where our focus is for mental health, but that's where we're at. And when we look at the, when we look at utilizing these funds, one of the things that they're really urging with best practices is that youth intervention and prevention. And the, the sooner you can work with youth in our communities, the better chance you are avoiding opioids and fentanyl and other mood-altering chemicals. So they've been, been utilizing this for a year, it's going well. And so what we've been working with United Way is to expand this program. So currently under the pilot, they've just been working with a handful of elementary schools in District 77. And what this will do is get to all elementary schools within District 77, and then working to build this model out that will also be working with Lake Crystal, St. Clair, Maple River, and then also some conversations with, with private schools as well of how to get these services. And really what this does is working with these youth that are, you know, really young, taking some of that pressure off of teachers, school counselors, to get somebody in that's really focusing on how to get mental health services to our kids. We know that there's a, there's a shortage statewide, nationwide to getting mental health services. But what they've found is that they've been able to take sometimes up to, you know, three, four, or five months to get mental health services. And with this program, they're getting them, and it's at about 30 days. So that's pretty significant that they're giving kids into mental health services. And if they're not able to get them into the services, this navigator is actually able to work with them to try to give them some extra support in their schools. So there's been one position, the goal with this funding. There's also looking at, the city of Mankato is looking at, also partnering with this as well. And then there also, I know there's some ongoing conversations with Niklet County, Wasika County, and La Sura County as well, as that's part of the United Way service area. So that's, that's where they're going right now. And really what the ask is for this is to approve the agreement for the United Way of $50,000 per year for a total of $250,000 over five years.
Okay, we've heard the request. One of the things I think we've all asked for is we work together on this and do as much leveraging of things, and it seems to check this box. So I would entertain a motion for the funding of $250,000 over the next five years. So, I would entertain a motion for the funding of $250,000 over the next five years.
How about it?
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Good program.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried.
Thanks, Josh.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Next on our agenda is administration, county administrator. Bob, please.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for May 2nd.
So, moved.
Okay, we've got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion on the minutes. Concerns? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion's carried.
Next will be the bills for the three weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
We've got the bills moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion on the bills. Questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Carry.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 12 in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just have informational items for the board today, but a lot of activity. Again, we still are seeing a lot of HR-related activity. Starting with a number of positions being filled in the sheriff's office, including three deputies, two permanent positions, one a temporary position. And then, a couple of correctional officers in the jail, one a part-timer and one a full-time position. Then, item F is an increase in hours for a correctional officer that have been serving in a part-time role, increasing to a full-time position. We actually have two of those. And then, we've initiated recruitment to fill two of those part-time correctional officers as a result. Continuing on in the jail, we have filled a part-time, two part-time correctional officer positions. And then, we did have a one completion of employment of a correctional officer. And so, jointly, we had a resignation of a correctional officer, and so, that results in item M where we've initiated recruitment to fill two correctional officer positions. Moving away then from the sheriff's department to the library, we see we've filled a library clerk-on-call position, and we did have a resignation of a part-time library technician. So, we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. In the property environmental resources area, we have filled a specialist one position. And then, also a specialist one at the landfill. We've initiated recruitment to refill a mapping and property records specialist. This was formerly our GIS specialist and technology coordinator. And so, we're kind of reverting back to the old mapping position with the goal someday of maybe adding additional GIS position. So, Commissioner O'Connor is somewhat familiar with that layout, but we've found that that GIS mapping role has been a challenging recruitment, so we're trying to separate those going forward. So, then, item T is employment of a case aide in our financial assistance area of human services. We did get a resignation of our security administration, administrator in our IT department, so that's a challenging position, but we're going to initiate recruitment to refill that. We also had a resignation of a business analyst, an application developer in our IT department. And so, that will have some impact on our tax system changeover to Tyler. But we have been in contact with Tyler, the, the organization we're buying that system from, and they are allocating some resources there at some additional cost to allow us to stay on our schedule of going live with that new tax system. Then, we have a resignation of a 911 telecommunicator, and so, we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. And also, a resignation of a public health specialist, and we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. So, again, a lot of activity that has a lot of impact on our operations, but I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Questions for Bob?
If not, I'm moving on to item number 13 in your packet, which is a temporary liquor license application from local brewing company. They are participating in an event in the middle of June out at the old Por Farm, and so, they requested this one-day temporary liquor license.
Okay, you've heard the request. We've got a motion?
A second.
And a second. Discussion? We're ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Carry.
Item number 14 in your packet is a memorandum regarding the Blue Earth River One Watershed One Plan process. That process is just getting started for the Blue Earth River watershed. And so, we've been working with a number of partners that are listed towards the bottom of the memorandum, the soil and water conservation districts from Blue Earth, Fairville, Freeborn, Jackson, and Martin Counties, along with the counties. And the city of Fairmount as well has indicated interest in this planning process. This planning process is similar to what's been done with the La Sua River watershed, and so, we're requesting approval today of a resolution to support that application for a planning grant for One Watershed One Plan. The Blue Earth River does cover about 10% of Blue Earth County, and we've identified some cities that are a part of that watershed area. But along with the La Sua River, the Blue Earth River obviously is one of our major river areas and watersheds. So, requesting board support for that resolution in your packet.
Okay, you've heard the request?
I'll move approval.
We've got a motion?
Yeah, a second.
And a second. Discussion?
Good program. Thanks for coming, Jared.
It, I think a lot of people don't realize, and this is one of those cases, you don't have to phone a friend or Google, you can just ask Jared, the SWCD. Technically, Blue Earth County, are we seven or eight watersheds in Blue Earth County? It gets right down to it.
Yeah, it would be seven.
Seven?
Seven.
That's a lot.
Much different than some.
So, we don't have to do the whole formal process, but there's a lot that we will be.
But even if we opt out, we still, of the planning department, we still can participate in the opportunities. It doesn't lock you out, you're just, you're, you're not as engaged in planning.
It isn't that we don't care about those watersheds. It is a resource issue for our department staff.
Great. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry. Financials?
Yes, item number 15 in your packet, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, is the financial status report through April 30th. We're a third of the year way through our fiscal year, and you'll see our total revenue sit at just under $20 million compared to total expenses of close to $31 million. This is kind of that low point in the year in terms of revenue compared to expenses because the first half, property taxes have not been collected at this point. You'll see though that our revenue continues to be strong in certain areas like the transportation sales tax. We are above last year's pace, which is encouraging. We also are seeing some return in our investments, which we haven't seen in some prior years. So, the, the changing market there is helping us a little bit. On the expenditure side, our expenditures are running strong, especially in the public aid assistance in the personal services area. But we hope to see those kind of mellow out a little bit, although, again, with our classification and compensation study, those personal services will probably continue to run strong compared to the budget as we go through the year. We're just at that point in the year where our contracts and fees line, we'll start to see some impact from our public works projects, so that will continue to grow over the summer month as those projects take place. Terms of the enterprise fund, at the bottom of that page, you'll see that our total revenues there are 1.2 million compared to expenditures of 851,000. This is our landfill, and so, we continue to see a lot of activity at the landfill, and that certainly is reflected in the revenue side. We will continue to see our expenses go up as well as we begin a self-construction. So, just things to be watching for in the future. The second page has our cash and investment balances, and you'll see towards the top that our total available funds are about 51 million compared to a six-month operating needs of 58.6 million. Total funds are running about 117.5 million, so we still remain in a very healthy cash balance situation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of the financial staff's report.
Questions on the financials?
None for me.
Anything else, Bob?
That's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we will go to commissioners' reports on committees. Patty, would you please go first?
Certainly. Well, we did have on May 2nd, a public works open house. May 15th, I, the week of, that week, I attended WIR out in Utah. And yesterday morning was the inclusivity study and findings report. And that's my report.
Thank you. Mark?
Oh, okay, May 2nd. Yeah, we had the public works open house. May 4th, we did have Mankato Planning Organization, went through some projects, like some money for Mankato for bus, bus and energy, battery operated for the, with the MSU, so, green energy items, things like that. After whatever, 10 years, I'm not the chair anymore, the people. It was, it wasn't a dethroning or anything, but it's, actually, I'm vice chair. And, uh, now, how do you say, who's the new? Mike Leaven, I should say, is new chair. Anyway, then, had All Seasons Arena on the 12th of May, and we received from the Knutson the People, the construction with plans, what we'll do with the present facility improvements, and there's quite a bit there. And it was just, of course, for show and, and so, lead to more discussion, but I thought it was very thorough and trying to prioritize to be, I don't think should nickel and dime it, might just do it all. I don't think we're going to build any other facility somewhere else. I mean, that's not in the cards, so. So, there's even, even with the city of Mankato, with where we buses for when people come in, the kids hockey teams and stuff, you know, on Highland, they'd have room for that. And so, it's just kind of, it's just kind of interesting, but a whole front, everything would be at least redone or painted or whatever. But, yeah, and then, there's a lot of internal with the power equipment stuff through ICE. So, it's, is very thorough. Then, May 17th, did have a ship health improvement plan and that leadership meeting, and then, did have, oh, I did do MICA then the other day too, online, virtually.
I didn't catch it.
Yeah, it was, of course, well, that was a little dated now, again, but that was about legislative upcoming, happenings, but that's, that's, like I said, now, it's pretty much concluded, so. And then, I just, yeah, end up today with our joint ditch. Yep. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ken, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. After our last board meeting, we had a couple of joint ditch items to deal with in the afternoon, then we had the open house. I've had several SECB meetings and legislative meetings since our last meeting. The biggest news is our MVAC board met, so we're doing very well there, but Lynn has retired as the accountant there for 34 years, and every year had a great audit, so it's going to be hard to see her go. She's training someone in, she'll be there for a while to help train that person, which is, which is very nice. And I had to give up my presidency of that, and Bill Grosskreis took over because I had been in an officer capacity for 12 years, and I termed out, apparently. So, that was a great time running that organization, and Bill will do a great job moving forward. And then, this morning, we had some other joint ditch stuff. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. My report, as indicated, since our May 2nd board meeting, served as drainage authority on JD 1 and JD 15. On May 2nd, May 8th, had a meeting onsite with CASA 16 and some erosion concerns with public works. On the 12th and 13th, participated in the Governor's Fishing Opener meet and greet Friday night and the shore lunch on Saturday. On the 15th, participated in the EMC legislative update, met with Crystal Waters folks on some upcoming opportunities and projects, as well as attended the Lincoln Park Association. On the 17th, participated in the EMC leadership training opportunity in St. Pierre. We talked about difficult conversations, and it was an interesting, maybe different than your typical AMC, because this not only was, was county commissioners, but also city officials, township officers, school board members, and things like that. So, that was a good learning opportunity. On the 19th, we had a Gavirva Policy Committee meeting. 22nd, Rural Minnesota Energy Board meeting, as well as the NACO AG and Rural Affairs Policy Committee. And as mentioned this morning, the JD 48 hearing that we had. We did not have a La Sua One Watershed One Plan meeting this month. We've kind of approved our final draft as a policy committee of the, of the joint powers agreement and the bylaws. Those have been sent out to the four counties for their county attorneys review after we hear back if there's any issues on that. But then, as a policy committee, we will formally ask our boards for any concerns on those and then ultimately for their support. Calls or discussions since the last meeting primarily have been against water and odor, water, whether it's some rivers, drainage issues, things like that, some MFS issues, and then some short-term rental calls. And that completes my report. And at this point, it would be appropriate to have a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second?
We've got a motion and a second to recess. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry. This board meeting of Blue Earth County Commissioners is recessed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.